Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, June 13th, 2024 meeting of the Marlington Local School District Board of Education. Roll call please.
Josh Hagan.
Here.
Karen Humphreys.
Here.
Kathy Krupko.
Here.
Mark Ryan.
Here.
Jonathan Swift.
Reading of admission statements. In collaboration with staff, community, parents and students, the Marlington Local School District will develop lifelong learners who understand and apply knowledge and demonstrate excellence in pursuing the highest standards with effective intervention to challenge every student. Additions or corrections? Are there any additions or corrections? Adoption of the agenda? Is there a motion to adopt this board agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Follow the roll please.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Ms. Humphreys?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Thank you. Invocation, Mr. Foss.
Okay. Do it right there.
Just do it right here. Okay. Dear Lord, we thank you that we can be here tonight. We pray that you'll give the board wisdom and direct things in such a way that it blesses the kids greatly in our district. Pray for our community also. And we thank you again for the gifts that you'll bring. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Executive session, is there a motion for the Marlington Local School District Board of Education to recess into executive session pursuant to revised code 121.22G for the following purpose: Conferences with an attorney concerning pending or imminent court action.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Follow the roll please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphreys?
Yes.
Going in at six oh two? Okay.
Okay, we're out of executive discussion at 7:04 PM.
Okay, next up is OSBA, Mrs. Kathy Krupko.
Several things are on the docket, nothing's actually passed, it's all been in House bills and Senate bills. But by July 21st, I'm sorry, July 1st of 2025, school districts and community schools must adopt a policy governing students' cellphone use during school hours. So that's something I don't, if we need to get on top of. They're also offering, the Ohio Department of Education and workforce is calling for school districts to submit a list of all students who qualify for free or reduced-priced lunches for the summer to get benefits for that. Under the program, families will receive an additional one-time benefit of $120 to supplement children's nutrition over the summer. There's several hearings going on, there's one sponsored in the House that will provide for additional licensure pathways for career tech educator applicants. I'm gonna go through the short version here. There's a Senate bill that's known as the Education Deregulation Bill that's on the floor and going through discussions. And it would provide, allow districts to develop and use their own frameworks for teacher evaluations instead of the one developed by the State Board of Education. It would modify certain qualifications for senior or lead professional educators. It would eliminate seniority as a preference when making reductions in non-teaching staff positions. Anyway, there's several different ones, and I've given Bob a full list of everything. Nothing has been voted on, it's all in committee, it's all under hearings, but some things to keep an eye on for us. That's it.
Thanks. Okay, go through my June report here. Again, keeping with what I do, we talked about something to celebrate, where we're at going forward. Obviously, graduation, so we had a nice, wonderful graduation here, was it last Sunday, or two Sundays ago? Two Sundays ago, I had that, so we had Civic Center, we had class, about 167 graduates, picture there of our fluidorian taking a picture right before they toss their hats. Okay, we got migrant going on right now, so we have 19 students, we have three image students, those students are off-site being served. So they are at our middle school right now, they're doing obviously different lessons with Deputy Collins, we have bookmobile outside of their general education. They go to Cuddy's, they see therapy dogs, they have healthy eatings, they get to see the zoo, they have health fair, family night. What I can tell you from a board is this is our last year for in-person program. Okay, so due to the students shrinking, the amount of students that we get, obviously every student that we serve is a funding mechanism for a grant. We get, you know, the federal, the federal government gives us a grant that basically is dependent upon a reserve, which is funneled down through the state of Ohio. To be honest with you, our, Marlington, we actually cover one-half of the state of Ohio.
Okay, we're out of executive discussion at 7:04 PM.
Okay, next up is OSBA, Mrs. Kathy Kripko.
Several things are on the docket. Nothing's actually passed. It's all been in House bills and Senate bills. But by July 21st, I'm sorry, July 1st of 2025, school districts and community schools must adopt a policy governing students' cellphone use during school hours. So that's something I don't, if we, we need to get on top of. They're also offering, the Ohio Department of Education and workforce is calling for school districts to submit a list of all students who qualify for free or reduced-priced lunches for the summer to get benefits for that. Under the program, families will receive an additional one-time benefit of $120 to supplement children's nutrition over the summer. There's several hearings going on. There's one sponsored in the House that will provide for additional licensure pathways for career tech educator applicants. I'm gonna go through the short version here. There's a Senate bill that's known as the Education Deregulation Bill that's on the floor and going through discussions, and it would provide, allow districts to develop and use their own frameworks for teacher evaluations instead of the one developed by the State Board of Education. It would modify certain qualifications for senior or lead professional educators. It would eliminate seniority as a preference when making reductions in non-teaching staff positions. Anyway, there's, there's several different ones, and I've given Bob a full list of everything. Nothing has been voted on. It's all in committee. It's all under hearings, but some things to keep an eye on for us. That's it.
Thanks. Okay, go through my June report here. Again, keeping with the, what I do, we talked about something to celebrate, where we're at going forward. Obviously, graduation. So we had a nice, wonderful graduation here. Was that was last Sunday? Or two Sundays ago? Two Sundays ago, I had that. So we had Civic Center. We had class, about 167 graduates. Picture there of our fluidorian taking a picture right before they toss their hats. Okay, we got migrant going on right now. So we have 19 students. We have three image students. Those students are off-site being served. So they are at our middle school right now. They're doing obviously different lessons with Deputy Collins. We have bookmobile outside of their general education. They go to Cuddy's. They see therapy dogs. They have healthy eatings. They get to see the zoo. They have health fair, family night. What I can tell you from a board is this is our last year for in-person program. Okay, so due to the students shrinking, the amount of students that we get, obviously every, every student that we serve is, is a funding mechanism for a grant. We get a, you know, the federal, the federal government gives us a grant that basically depend, is dependent upon a reserve, which is funneled down through the state of Ohio. To be honest with you, our, Marlinton, we actually cover one-half of the state of Ohio. But, you know, there's a lot goes into finding where the migrants and then how you service them and be able to raise our numbers. Most of it came from Zeller's Farm, you know, in Marlboro for years, but he is slowly, you know, not farming as much or doing what he was doing out there on that land, so that has changed the outcome of the families coming in. So our allocation actually, anticipated allocation, we, Mrs. Morton and I have met with the state representative and then our regional representative multiple times in the last few weeks. And it's come to our attention that basically our allocation next year is only gonna be like $30,000, you know, for next summer, where we were averaging anywhere between $100,000 to $150,000 to service. So our, our plan is to basically, we still have to find ways to, what we call service kids, but it'll just look a little different. It won't be in-house because we can't fund it. I mean, migrant is strictly fu, is not funded with Marlinton dollars. So unless that funding mechanism changes in the next 10, 12 months, I can't in good conscience say, let's continue to have an in-house program, and then we have to eat the difference in cost. So, and they concur. So, and this is, this is very common around the state of Ohio right now. There's, I think there were six different, what they would consider sites that deal with, that work with and educate migrant students. And one of those sites is completely closed, and a couple are on the verge, and we're right there with a lot. So it's just where we're at. But it is going on right now. It's a great program. I hate to say that that this is our last in-house year for it, but that's just where we're at right now. Obviously, I will be giving you an update in the next two months, and then hopefully, you know, as we move forward, and I talk about the state of the schools here in, in August or September. This is what's going on right now in my world. Obviously, we have elementary playground updates going on. I'm gonna talk about Lexington abatement. We got Marlboro paving in the side lot. We got Washington paving in the gravel lot. We got the MMS parking lot lighting and soccer parking lot lighting. We're gonna have painting going on. We have to get the soccer lot paved. Our softball dugouts have holes in them that have to be addressed, so those, we're getting those taken care of. We have, obviously, our auditorium curtains are the originals, so we're gonna get them new curtains. The high school in the Mall and Center, some lighting over there, you know, between the high school and the Mall and Center, some lighting. We need to purchase a couple buses. We're going to put air conditioning in the high school auditorium. We're looking at some fencing issues on the soccer, baseball on track. And all buildings will have paintings of rooms. And obviously, as you can see when you came in, we're in the middle of the high school roof phase two. There's a lot of different contractors we're meeting with right now.
Was the auditorium curtains for sale? Some fundraising done for that in addition to what we're spending? Drama club or music program?
For the curtains?
Yeah.
No. And I really just wanted-
I heard some rumblings about that.
It, it, it came up when they did Annie two years ago. And a, a, a couple of community members nicely said, it's, I think you guys really put on a great show, which we always do. And then they said, what, what really sold it was the fact that you brought in curtains of the era for Annie. Because they were, they were old and they were tattered. There was rips and holes and things like that.
That's hilarious.
Mr. Pendergrass and Mr. Monney and the rest of the drama department met with me, and they said, they said, you know, is there, is there any chance that the, the board would approve new curtains? And I said, you know, this was two years ago. And I said, why don't you get me some quotes? Well, it took them two years to get me quotes. I wasn't like hunting this down. I just was waiting for, you know, quotes. And they, and they got a couple quotes, and they, and they're actually more reasonable than I thought. So we were able to be able to do that for them. So I think it'll be nice to get the, that air condition, which I think the community is really gonna appreciate and the staff that uses it. And obviously, the new curtains will look really nice.
That room has not had a refresh for ever, literally.
No, the arts department's really excited.
Do you have any idea what ballpark, what those are gonna cost?
About $27,000, maybe? $25,000 or less? They had some quotes that were a little higher, but a little bit more higher than that, but I think it's right around there.
$25,432.
What'd you say?
I said, "Boy, Bob."
Got one.
On it.
You know, I, as part of, like, when Bob talks, how we're allocating, you know, looking at what we fund or not, like I see, you know, like, talk about buses. You know, that we, we need to, we didn't do any buses this year, but we, we, our fleet going into next year, we have a total of 31 units. That's what, that's how we define them, if that's the way you wanna do it. Two are non-reparable at this point. One's iffy. That leaves us about 28. And typically, the rule of thumb is, in the transportation world, is when you have a bus on the road that you purchased after 10 years, you push it. You really need to start, it, it, it'll be lucky if it passes inspection. It depends. And a lot of it isn't so much the engine as it is just the rusting from, actually, the inside out, not built right.
What's the average, what's the average age of our fleet?
So our, we have 12 units that'll be over 10 years old, 16 units that will be 10 years old coming up.
So we're, we're at that level.
So we actually, to go further, if you wanted to take a look, it's in my office. You know, we actually, Bob and I met with Mr. Mather and Ms. Sherry. They brought over buses as like a show and tell. And then they brought, like, the 12 buses that are in question right now on age, and were questionable to get them ready for, to pass inspection. And brought pictures and then showed us examples of what they're dealing with and what they're doing to save us money. At the end of the day, we've been, we just, to stay on target, we're gonna have to really just kinda maybe set aside an RPI. You know, as we're looking at it, we gotta, we're gonna have to kinda go at two buses a year for a little while here, just to keep our fleet updated.
Yeah, I think when you see them going down the road, you don't, don't see them so well. See them up close and see the rust and the other issues that, like Tom Mather was showing us, it becomes pretty obvious what kind of shape they're in. And there's a need to get caught up a little bit here.
Luckily, in this case, like, when we had the, the major bus accident at the beginning of the year, and that bus was totaled, the insurance basically gave us full money for that bus, which was about $110,000. We purchased no bus with that. We just held it. So what, you know what, we'll be looking at, you know, with money transfers and the board's okay, you know, we'll be looking at trying, two buses. We're really getting one for this upcoming, you know, with what it is. Because a bus is roughly about $100,000 to $110,000 when you go through the co-op.
And how old was that bus?
Uh, you know what? I don't know. I can find out. I don't know.
And it was on our-
It was, it was on the younger side. It was one of our newer buses.
No, yeah, we wouldn't have gotten that value out of it.
I'm thinking like four-ish years old. I'm, I'm not positive.
Because the other thing I'll be asking, since we have two buses that are non-reparable, so typically, we sell those buses for scrap. Or somebody takes them. On average, we get anywhere between $2,000 and $3,000 is what we get. What I'll be asking for the board probably next month or the following month, once I get figured out, if that's what's, if they're non-reparable for sure based on what he has, would be if, instead of selling one of those for a couple thousand dollars, would you guys consider donating it to the three local township fire departments?
Oh, would they just practice on it?
That was practice, correct.
Okay, that's cool.
So that was a request?
Don't we keep, don't we keep one, don't we keep one for parts typically?
Well, luckily, we, we've worked it out over the last few years, Tom has, that any new bus we get, all our buses are the same, are the same type. They're internationals. So, you know, like, there's internationals, there's Bluebirds, there's different types of buses. We had an intermix, but now we're all under one fleet. So when we, we can, that's what we can do. So if one of our buses does go down, but the engine's good, Tom has the ability to swap that out. Now, Tom's a very old soul, so he, you know, he can do that. You know, you're very hard-pressed to find. Tom's got about another year or two before he's gonna retire, so it's hard to find people that are willing to know that trade, to take engines completely out of buses and replace them versus-
Shopping it out?
Shopping it out, right. Small conversations. But I will be asking if we do have a bus that we know that we were planning on having to scrap, if the board is okay with it at some point, that you guys would pass, you know, ask for your, to be able to donate that to one of the three local townships. But that's the kinda why I put two buses on there, because it wasn't, you know, originally in any type of summer project conversation, but kinda where we're at on that. Everything else, we've kinda, you guys are kinda aware.
So you're, so you're saying every, every year, do the two buses for the next five years or so, and that would get-
We're just trying to get our fleet-
Get us caught up somewhat?
Our fleet caught up, or just maintain. I mean, we, we drive a lot. I mean, I, I don't have the exact mileage. I wasn't grabbing all my notes, but, I mean, I know Sherry has come in every year and kinda said that. I mean, I can have all that for you and send it in an email, but, I mean, she's talked about it, how far our buses go, the gas and what we do and the wear and tear on them, but Tom does a real good job of keeping our buses up and running. Don't get me wrong. It's him and Zach did great. They're just getting old. He'd be more than happy to come in and talk to you guys, too. He said, Tom, I could sit and talk and do whatever. So if there's any type of, like, you really wanna know really what's going on, or, or if he said, if any of the board members wanna stop up at the bus garage, I'll show them what's going on, or talk them through how the state, you know, determines this, and he goes, he's got all the documentation. He breaks it all down. He's got, so, you know, so please let me know if that's any interest at all, you know, there's a-
When's the inspector coming?
They come all the time, so it varies. I mean, summer is their big inspection time, but we can inspect it all year. We have buses that can inspect it all year long. And then they do spot inspections. It's amazing when they showed us how many of our buses actually rust from the inside out. So you don't see it on the outside. They look great, but they're all rusting on the inside, or they're, all the floors are deteriorating. And we got leak and roof leaking, so that's just a... That's all. I was just talking about buses. This is all.
I know for work vehicles, they've got like a spray underliner you can get. Is that something that, that's been looked at?
I don't know. I can find out.
Prolong? You should have things like, you know, like the back door of a bus, like the sides, the back of the bus, where it's rusting, like Dan said, literally from the inside out. So it's not like the salt spray or things-
From the kids tracking it in.
Trapped inside or something.
Salt on the boots.
I mean, like an undercoating or something hypothetically could work for certain parts of it, but definitely some of the areas are just, I think, the way they're designed.
Are we still putting speed bumps in on that driveway between the mall and Center? Okay, good, because I've seen some pretty interesting driving this week.
I, I do on a regular basis as well. Dropping my son off.
Yeah.
No, the original bump, the speed bumps, we waited at that till they were actually paved, so those little bumps that the Vasco's gonna put out there. You have that section right there around the tennis courts.
Wonderful.
I know you saw tennis courts on there, so if you haven't seen our tennis courts, I think they're done. So you can go out there and look at those.
I did today. It looks-
My daughter wanted to go play tennis yesterday. I'm like, I'm gonna be-
No, they're, they're, they're really nice. So get a chance to get out there, take a look at those. They did a real nice job. As normal, I will update every month, or just, you know, any questions, just please give me a call on that. Oh, there, there. So, I'll, I'll keep going. I forgot there's another slide. So tennis courts, and those are, those are complete, city water, obviously, the special services. High school front lots around the building's gonna be paved last because we gotta wait till the roofing project's all done. The CT room upgrades we're gonna talk about tonight is, because we forget, did that to be approved. That's grant-related for our career tech. And then obviously, career tech equipment's on order. So all that's also happening, too. All right. I was, I had on there Lexington abatement, because that was not on our work session. We talked about it. We know the cost to abate Lexington's about $500,000. That's, you know, a rough guess, you know, based on what we were told when we had it quoted a couple of years ago. At the end of the day, just to put all, I'm sure you all had different rumors or whatever. Memorial Weekend, we knew on Friday there was some moisture, or there was a crack. I apologize, a crack. It was much smaller than that, the far right, that, so our custodians are fully aware that if they see anything different when they walk and check the buildings, they're supposed to call the abatement specialist. Bill Racine comes out. He's like, "Yeah." He calls me, says, "We're gonna have to encapsulate that and take care of it on Friday after school. No problem." You know, I go, "How much is that?" "Couple thousand dollars." "Okay, can you please get that done so we can get ready to go for Tuesday after Memorial Day? Have a great weekend." Saturday morning, call, says, "Dan, can you make a trip?" Actually, it's Friday night, but Saturday morning, "Can you come meet me in Lexington?" Basically, there was some moisture in the ceiling. And he said, "Because the mo, the area of moisture in the ceiling and the fact, you know, the crack wasn't as much as the issue, as there was moisture around the crack in a larger area, they have to contain it," which that's an example of what they did. They just kinda walled off one area and then walled off another area, which is right in the middle of the main hallway. Josh actually saw that out there. So in case if it did fall, it wouldn't disrupt any other portion of the building.
What was the source of the moisture?
Still don't know, because it doesn't start abatement till Monday. So his best guess on this-
They didn't abate that part yet?
No, Monday.
Oh, okay.
That's my, so, uh, he, because it's more than 50 square feet, he has to inform the health department. Health department's not open until Tuesday after Memorial Day, then they have to wait 10 days by law before they're allowed to start work. I know that sounds really strange, but that's, that's what he told me. So basically, we have eight days of school left. My main hallway is blocked. It is perfectly safe for kids to come in, because nothing has fallen. The problem is I can't get the kids out if there is an actual emergency. They lost an access point. It just becomes a fire disaster. So Eric Wagner, the Lexington Fire Chief, came out. He agreed. Said, "No." Josh, he came out with me on Saturday, took a look at it. I think they were just finishing walling it, or it was pretty close to being done at that point. So his question was, "Why, why moisture?" So the only, they can only guess until they get in there. Their guess is, you know, because there is no AC in the hallways, chance that it's just the difference in the heat in the classrooms and that. You know, the question is, was there a leak in the roof? He's gonna say, "No," because there's not direct spots, but he won't know that till he gets in there, if that makes sense. So that was, that was the rationale for that section. No giant ceiling fell down or half the, you know, I don't know what rumors were out there, that none of that was the case. It was really just, we're blocking our main hallway. I asked Bill Racine, the abatement specialist, what would it take to never shut down Lexington again? Because my fear would be if this would have happened in the middle of April, in the middle of testing, we'd have been shutting down for a month. And then we're worrying about displacing kids, moving classrooms, and there's all, you know, as we know, we've done this. This is not an easy task at all. So, uh, under that premise, he said, "The only way you can pretty much, pretty much guarantee is you basically abate the hallways." I said, "Can you, can you give me a quote on that?" And he did. That, that is be presented from you, in front of you tonight in new business. I would like to abate the hallways of Lexington, every hallway. And also, so that way, for the most part, then we can, we're gonna make sure that Lexington's doors stay open and those kids are being educated. On that note, okay. All right, open enrollment. If you got any more abatement questions, we can, that I'll tell you, because I got something I think. Open enrollment, we had, we took 36 new open enrollment students this year. At the high school, we took eight. Middle school, we took six. Lexington, we took zero. Marlboro, we took 10. Washington, we took 12. That does not mean we accept it, every single open enrollment student. I just wanted to kinda give you an update. Now, on all of our, from an open enrollment standpoint, Lexington is closed. Since I became superintendent, we have not allowed- Since I became superintendent, we have not allowed any open enrollment students in Lexington except for kindergarten. This year I closed kindergarten. Uh, we just, if I'm going to maintain staffing levels, it'll, it gets to the point where it could make the, those classes seem to get bigger. So at the end of the day, I kind of look at it as if you're a Lexington resident, then you can go to Lexington. That keeps our. If I allow all the open enrollment, because Alliance is so close to Lexington and Washington, the closest is Lexington. Most of the open enrollment for ease purposes is Lexington. When that ends up, that's where enough and we have to add teachers or not more. As you, we talked before as a group, we're not getting that funding. You know, for additional kits. So we have to be cautious about how we do that. That's why Lexington's zero. It's not because no one applied. It's just because we have to keep that building closed to keep it, because our numbers are too high. We have availability. Marlboro has like certain grade levels closed. Washington has certain grade levels closed. Middle school and high school do not.
So when people apply, do they apply to a specific elementary?
So on our, so on our link, we give them an option. So if you're a K through five student, you apply for open enrollment. We kind of say, can you put your first choice, your second choice, your third choice? Okay? Some people just have one choice because that's all they want. Well, if they get denied, then they're out. Some will say, oh, let's say Lexington number one, Washington two, Marlboro three. Well, let's just say that Lexington's closed and it's, you know, then we'll go to Washington. We'll look at that grade level size. If that grade level's too big and that's closed, then we'll go to Marlboro. And that's, you know, so it's. We give the parents the option. We don't, and then when we send them the letter, they just say, no, then I'm out, I'm out. But that's where they're at. So yes, we do give them an option. Back on, back on the abatement, just to be clear, this is not a short cycle thing. Josh, you were asking when they're starting. So. I call it, it's a, they call it a four-phase project. Phase one will start June 17th and go to July 3rd. That's 12 days. Phase two. Is going to go July 8th to July 23rd. This is a rough guess and that's a 13 days. Phase three is July 24th to August 7th. That'll be 11 days. Phase four will be August 8th to August 23rd and that'll be 12 days.
And that's just to do these hallways?
It's just to do the hallways. Now, we, we're going to, we, uh, we obviously had the drop ceiling company come in, give a quote. It came in very reasonable, right around $25,000. Uh, so they're going to follow along by phase so we can kind of keep up with this. They're just pushing it to that August 23rd. You know, we're going to be. You know, on top of getting the rooms cleaned, this clean and that, Lexington's going to be, you know, we're going to be kind of working through that process. So that's kind of where it's at. So we just basically have sections of hallways we're choosing. You know, that's how he broke it down to be able to kind of work through this process.
Now, is there any asbestos in the walls in those hallways?
In the walls?
Yeah.
No, it's the, uh, I don't want to say it's brick. What's the old like glat, the tile, the?
Okay.
And actually, when they do always, they seal the rooms. So each room is like the doors to the rooms are sealed, so nothing goes in there. So until they're completely done and then they unseal the room, so the rooms are perfect. Any questions, that let me know, but that's kind of the directions on that. All right. Sorry, lot to. Give you a little bit, little bit of everything going on here last.
You're, you're going to talk about the cost on this later?
Yep, yep, yep. So the cost, Mark. We can wait. No, that's not even that. This is different. The cost is, the cost for the abatement is $160,000. Uh, roughly, I think it's $160,160. That's roughly what it is. And then the.
Plus the drop ceiling.
Plus the drop ceiling is another $25,000. So you're probably looking at about $185,000 total. Where we're at.
And I asked Dan why, why we didn't just do all the ceilings in the school and you had a good point with the classrooms. If you have an individual classroom, you can shut down and move versus a hallway. We run the same situation as at the end of the year.
So basically I said, we were rolling, two years ago when we talked about the abatement, we, we agreed as a board. To kind of take, as things would happen, we kind of would address them because we knew we could, but and then if we got to a point where we got through enough projects, then we'd have to come back and start looking at a, a larger abatement phase. This just kind of punched up the timeline a little bit. It's all dead. You know, so, you know, when I said, I want to be real careful when we approve projects, that we want to make sure we still carry enough PI money to be able to cover things like this, which we did, we were fine. It just eats a little bit more into our PI a little bit earlier. It just, i- it serves back to the need of, we have major needs. It's just, we're lucky that these needs we're still able to cover. I mean, if we have a. Abatement issues in all three elementaries all at the same time, we could be in really big trouble. All right. We just don't have the funding to carry it out, to be done. So it's, it's. My, I, at some point I might have to send something to the community and just when I send out something that just says, hey, you know, this is, you know, what, I guess maybe they need to know instead of who won tennis and who won basketball, we just need to be real clear. This is what we're doing. Here's. Cost basis and here's some potential things that are coming.
Are there any unabated ceilings in the hallways at Washington or Marlboro that could potentially cause a similar?
I don't, I don't think so because I think they're all drop ceilinged. And so that's when, so no, but I, I did ask Bill to sometime this summer in his spending at Lexington, if he could go to Marlboro and Washington and just kind of give me an update because I really don't have one. Like a good idea, you know, just that, because I need to know. Uh, so I'll have that too for you. My final thing here, I don't know if that's my final thing. I'm not sure if I would put in here. Disadvantaged people impact aid student wellness success funds. You probably have, have never been brought to the light of attention of what that is or whatever. So. Let, let's just go back to. Prior to me, we'll just go a couple of superintendents back, you know, whatever. Anyways, the, the, the state of Ohio gave like, I would consider it like, they said, here, we're going to give you money, like a grant. And I think it was the student wellness funds and that's what we paid our, like our counselors for. And I think Joe talked about it. Like, hey, we're going, we got these student wellness funds. We're going to pay our counselors. We're going to do this. So it was tied to a separate, the, the money mechanisms basically was tied to, it didn't come into gen fund. It was a separate category with criteria. Well, the state in their infinite wisdom. Decided that we'll still fund you money, but we're just going to throw it in general fund. So we have disadvantaged pupil impact aid and student wellness success funds, but they're no longer like a separate entity in a budget line item. They just throw it in general fund. Part of the law is to make sure that I clearly state to the board and to the public that we do get that money. How much money do we get? What did we use it for? Okay. So this past year in that, and this is new, so this is why they're, they're kind of doing this. So in the, so I call it DPIA, you know, we got about $142,524.63. And then in the S, in the student wellness and success fund, $293,805.96. And there's criteria for those. Just like there was before, you know, we have to still fill out a survey and send back to the Department of Education and workforce. What it is and then down to the penny, how did we spend this money, even though it comes directly out of general fund? So when you see it in the, you know, and Bob says, our general fund dollars, that's still embedded in there. So to give you guys what, then we have to define it in what we call initiatives and then what do those initiatives do? So there's a lot of details and behind the scenes, things that go in. But in the short version, we do it with school counselors, school resource officers, family support specialists, and then we call it physical healthcare services, which AKA are nurses. So that kind of gives you an idea of what we spent. For our counselors, resource officers. Now, that doesn't mean that's the total cost of those. That's just what we used out of that funding mechanism. So for school counselors, we took it out of the student wellness success funds. Out of that $293,000, we used $252,256.41. For our SROs, we used it completely out of the disadvantaged pupil aid. We used $123,352.28 of that. Family support specialists, we use $19,732, paid them out of the student wellness and then we had a split difference between that for our nurse. So it's, it's embedded in our general fund, but we, it's still coming in. It's just, it just, uh. It doesn't, it doesn't, Bob doesn't get an email or new, or new I that says, your DIPA funds are this, like we used to. Now we got to kind of find it. And then they say, hey, this is ass. We got to, we're very careful on how we, you know, it, it, we're not so concerned about how we pay it. We just have to be able to find how we're paying it because it's all embedded in general fund. But by law, I need to be able to tell you as a board and the community, these funds are still coming in and this is what we're using it for.
Yeah, we have to. We're going to have to address how we keep track of that with our account structure and just make sure that we can easily report that because when it's embedded with everything else. It's easy to get lost and you have to rely on, you know, which invoices did you pay with this and tally them all up and that's just not effective. So. We have to adjust our account structure. Keep track of it more efficiently this year.
Any questions on that? If you're curious about it, you can. Google it and it'll pop right up on, uh, the, the do.
Serious, okay.
Okay. And then as of where we're at, going into next year, obviously we're, you know, we're just kind of working through our staffing right now. Just looking at resignations, expenditures. We're pretty good shape. Uh. You know, district wants a need, that's the projects that's going on. Uh, and hopefully it's just to continue to be fiscally prudent, which we've been pretty good for two years. We're going to need to. Go on at it. And I'll just keep giving you updates, uh, next month or do my weekly things once I get back in the swing from vacation here next, next week, then we'll, uh, go on at it. Any questions for me?
Good. Public participation. Did anyone sign up?
No, no one signed up.
No one signed up. Okay, old business, there is none. New business.
All right, new business. Okay, new business. Uh, just, just the fact that we have to report out our second half, our second half of the year's bowling report. So just that is attached there. It's just reporting that officially we had zero reported incidents in all K-12, all of our buildings in the second half. Item two. Recommend the motion to approve the resolution as presented for the Stark County Schools Council of Governments Cooperative Advertising. And receiving bids for integrated school bus units in exhibit B.
So moved.
This is what you guys approve every year. It's just, it's not buying a bus or anything. It's just giving them the right to look at the bidding purposes to be able to get the lowest bid in buses.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Next, uh, every year we do this, recommend the motion to approve the following transportation and lieu agreements for the 2024-25 school year.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Uh, transportationally, we, we, as they come up, we, we get board approval for this. So last year. Transportation in lieu was minimum about $538.55 was last year. That's minimum. I don't know what the maximum amount was. I don't have that. This year it is $583.86.
Say five eighty?
Five eighty-three, eighty-six cents is the minimum and the maximum they could get in transportation in lieu is $1,167.72. That comes directly from the Department of Education workforce.
That's a big increase.
I don't know what the max was, so. Pass it down, Joshua.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Okay. Third action, recommend the motion to approve the purchase of iPads as shown in exhibit C.
So moved.
Second.
This is our refresh. So this year we are doing sixth grade and ninth grade.
Rotation.
Ben, can you tell us the rotation?
Yes, so. The, the rotation that we got into was to purchase new devices in third grade, sixth grade and ninth grade. Utilizing the SIR funds here the past few years. We've kind of gotten ahead of that, so that's why we're not refreshing third grade this year. We still have devices from eighth and twelfth grade. That aren't old enough that we want to sell them off yet, so those are being used to fill in how many.
Great. Nice. Thank you.
The total's $127,000?
Yes.
Ninety-three.
Okay.
So the option is. Bob is a, Bob is, Bob is an option to. And the nice thing about technology is you can do two different funding mechanisms. Obviously we had the SIR money for a few years, so we were, a lot of our curriculum, you know, supplies, we were able to do out of that. We knew this is not one that we could just absorb and not do. It's just part of our refresh and what we do, but it'd just be a matter of, you know, do we choose to look at funding that out of permanent improvement money or do we do fund out of general fund money? In the past, the district has done everything out of gen fund. So it's just a matter of where we sit comfortably and what, you know, feels comfortable in that, with that technology.
Yeah, initially I expect it'll be charged to permanent improvement. But, uh, I guess the big issue is, uh, like what Ben mentioned, that last year and year before, we've paid out of SIR grant funds. So you could look at it, regardless of where we book it, it's, it's a real district expense this year and then it's coming out of those funds we'd use for those purposes.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Okay, our resolution, or sorry, action number five, recommend the, recommend action, sorry. Don't doubt. Recommend to approve the resolution for the renewal expense levy as shown in exhibits D and E.
The motion? So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
This is renewal. Not a new tax. This is, uh, our 8.5 mil renewal. It brings us currently roughly around $2.2 million. Exact number, but that's pretty close. Probably a little over 2.2 million. This gives the, us, with board approval, they, we can send this to, over to Alan Harrell to kind of get the exact numbers and costs. And then it would be, come back, uh, next month for another approval to be able to go on the ballot. For, uh, because everything has to be in before our August board meeting. So we'd have, that's why we do it in June. Um, this would be on for the November. This would be for November.
That passed last, um, 2019. You know, when that.
This was placed, that was the first time it was placed, right?
No.
Was that, no, that's what I was going to ask. When was the first time?
We haven't had new money in 20. I want to say about 22 years. Since we've had new money. So this, this has been.
This one of the original levies?
This has been renewed. This has been renewed multiple times, about every five years. So we're on a renewal cycle. So we have not changed anything from the original language of that. We just wait every five years and ask the. Uh, taxpayers to renew based on that. So this will certify it to the auditor, what the cost with the district we get.
Yes, I'm curious and this might be a question for Ryan Gazoni next time we talk to him. What happens if we don't pass a renewal now that we're at the 20 mil floor?
You're, you'll still lose 2.2 million dollars.
It's still going to be the same amount?
I mean, I can ask him, but I'm pretty sure I've asked him that question. We're going to lose 2.2 million dollars.
Not that I expect that to happen. I don't think we've ever had a problem passing a renewal.
No, our community's been really supportive of renewals from the original inception, but I want to make sure Alan told me to meet the timelines to get it on the ballot. This would be the most efficient way without having you guys to hold extra meetings. be the most efficient way without having you guys to hold extra meetings in the middle of the summer. Why that's out there. So this would just be for him to send it over so he can kind of put the language together and then next month, you'll get the exact language and exact cost per $100,000 home and all that that has to be on the ballot itself. Because I don't, I can't do that till that goes over.
Can you ask him what this effective millage is?
Yeah.
Can you talk to him? Just curious.
I know I have that in my office as well, too.
Okay.
He's gonna have that sheet with me.
Yep.
Call the, uh, yeah, call the roll, please.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Josh, I will follow up with Ryan and ask that, so I'm not, so.
I was just curious.
In our conversations, I know what I, what we had, but that was obviously-
I was just curious because, because if we went and passed a levy now for whatever the equivalent millage is of what we're getting because of the 20 mil floor, it would just offset it, correct?
No, so a general fund levy would, you know, if you don't, if you don't run an emergency levy or a PI levy, then you, then it would affect your floor.
It would counter.
It would counter the floor and affect, uh, emergency levy and PI levy does not affect the floor at all. So like when we even looked at small levy amount that I went at for buildings, that would have zero effect on the 20 mil floor. But if you would say to me, like Dan, I recommend, I think we could pass a 1.5 mil operating levy, what you're gonna do is end up essentially taking us off the 20, you're gonna take us off the 20 mil floor. Because you're, because it's a, so there's actually guidelines on that. I can actually send it to you that basically says, here's, here's the levies that boards should look at that will affect the floor and here's levies that won't. But in a nutshell, it's really emergency levies and PIs. Other than that, you're gonna have a potential affecting here. I can't answer on income tax, so don't vote that one. I can't, because I don't know. So if you ask me if the income tax fixable, I don't know.
All right.
But I'll find out.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. Number six, recommend the motion to approve the following resolution with Environmental Support Network included, or Inc., shown in Exhibit F.
So moved.
Second.
This is the abatement.
So we're just voting on the abatement removal of the asbestos and we won't need to vote on the drop ceiling since that's in your-
The drop, yes, under 25.
Is 160,160 dollars. Quite interesting.
Correct.
Okay.
But that, that needs to be voted on by the board. It has to be, it has to be presented in a resolution. There has to be a reason why when you're talking about that type of money. This is what the lawyers deem as urgent necessity, something that you can't wait. You know, you wanna be able to operate within the school confines of your school.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Uh, the final one, number seven, is recommend the motion to approve the resolution with Griner's Interior LTD as shown in Exhibit G.
So move.
Second.
This is the career, the CTE, the career tech, this is the grant. This is all grant. So basically, this is a little different. This is not like an urgent necessity. This one had to be put out for public bid with specific criteria. We had to hold meetings with, a day with the lawyers, bring in the companies that were interested. They got to visit the room and get, they get questions. And then we had addendums and kind of worked through the process and it was all sealed bid, brought to the board office. Bob, the treasurer, opened those sealed bids in front of everybody there, copied it down, did a bid tabulation seat, and it gets tense back. The lowest bidder gets the job. So that's kind of where we're at.
How many beds were there? Three?
Three.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Treasurers agenda.
Okay. Just to wrap up one question, Mr. Ryan had the renewal levy. It's down to about 2.84 effective mils residential rate.
2.84?
Yeah.
It was originally, what, 8.5?
Yes.
Hurts.
Craziest thing.
Okay. I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the May 16th, 2024 regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Joshua.
Um, discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend that the Board approve the financial reports as listed for the month of May. So moved.
Second. Discussion?
Give you a couple highlights here quickly. We finished the month with a total fund balance of $12,912,826.46. That's for all funds. For the general fund, we finished with a cash One highlight here, through May, we, or actually through today, we've received $513,033.83 in investment earnings. That's up from last year, which was $322,723.90. And then in FY '22, so two years back, you could say, it was under $40,000. So the rates have really helped us a lot.
Interest rate going up is helping somebody.
Yeah.
Hurts some and-
Everybody else is hurting.
Helps others.
So we'll take that. Are there any questions on the check register as well?
You're gonna see in the check register, it's a longer list only because we had the folk scholarship people are on there. So you're gonna see those, those 32 names, you know, so you got 32 additional students on there and check registers on that, that list.
Okay, but, good. All right. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is to recommend that the Board approve the fiscal year 2024 final appropriations and revenue revisions as shown. So moved.
Second.
Okay. Well, these are just really aligning our expected needs and tweaking our revenue projections for year end here is really, by, by fund, by fund level. That's what the final appropriations are, are doing.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Or, Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Did I get you?
You got everybody.
Okay, sorry. I left Jonathan's name on that one and it threw me for a curve there in my head. Okay, sorry about that.
No problem.
Um, next item on the agenda is approval of the initial appropriations and revisions for this coming fiscal year, fiscal year '25.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Some of the basis for making these revisions is really the work that was done on the forecast, as far as the general fund goes at least. So like on our initial certificate, the amount we had for expected revenue was higher, so that's being lowered to match the forecast. That's really the main item for the revenue revisions for the general fund. The grant ones, a lot of that, the numbers that you see as revisions is aligning them to what we have as far as the allocations that we're expecting. Several of the grants, just as of yesterday, we received our allocation amounts, so we know what we're getting for the, a couple of big ones like Title I and IDEA, for example. So these numbers are based on what we expect to get. A couple of the grant funds are still based on what we got last year, so we haven't been notified yet what the actual amounts will be. As far as the appropriations go, the total budgeted is $26,366,727 in the general fund. And that's, that ties out to the May 2024 forecast that the Board approved this spring. Fund 300, it's not a big change, but $25,000 lower based on last year's revenue, just tweaked that a little bit. And the grant funds, the funds 400 through 599, those again are based on what we anticipate to receive and spend throughout the year. Couple notes here, you know, summer projects are reflected in the O-70 fund and the O-3 fund. So the O-3 fund, the amounts I have there for FY '25 appropriations allows enough budget to cover the two new buses at this point in time, if you prove it as is. Also, that Apple device refresh that was mentioned. Oh, O-70, just to recap, you probably remember this, but as far as revenue goes, we're anticipating about 1.4 million will get transferred into that this upcoming year from the pipeline. Which we already have over that amount allocated to these summer projects from the fund, too. So we're using it.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
The last item on the treasurer's agenda is a fund-to-fund transfer. I'd like to recommend that the Board approve that.
The motion?
So.
Second.
Okay.
The, the transfer is to move $137,935 from the general fund to the, to fund at 035, which is the termination benefits fund. We try to keep a balance in there of roughly $130,000 based on estimated retirements for the year. And we actually went over that estimate by almost $8,000 this year. We had a lot of retirements. But we'll have the same amount available this coming year.
What, what is, what does that encompass, the termination benefits?
Uh, the biggest pieces are usually like payouts of people's vacation. They get one fourth of their-
Sick days.
Sick days up to 75. That's, that's the main thing that comes out of there. Any payout at any time that they, they're due like that. Also, the bonuses, like where people will have like an early retirement incentive, I guess is what it's technically called, that comes out of there as well, too. So if they notify Mr. Swisher, if it's their first time eligible to retire, their contracts have a clause in there. Teachers, it's up to 15,000.
Yeah, it doesn't happen very often because typically, first time retirements earlier than they do for on the benefits. But when we talk about that, it's, we just had a lot of retirements, but it's the, any staff member, at least in our contract, I think it's probably state of Ohio, they, they can, get one quarter of your sick days can be reimbursed up to 70. Now, the only way you can get 70 sick days reimbursed is you have to carry at least 280-plus sick days at retirement, which is, doesn't happen very often. But some do actually work 30, 30, 35 years and really don't take too much time off, you know, which is great. That's what you want. So that's what it's for.
Yeah, the sick days makes up by, by far the largest component of that payout of those.
It's just contractual language based on our union contract.
Thank you.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Okay, personnel, if you guys are good, I'm going to consent this. I will go through it. We have certified resignations. We have three resignations, teachers. Certified hires there is to replace teachers that have left us. We have our normal tutor hires that are either that were non, at the one meeting, they're non-renewed based on the contract and based on our allocation of funds, how we, how we bring them back. We have a certified staff transfer. We had a tutor that's gonna transfer to a, a teacher. We have one limited contract, certified teacher contract that we needed to add from last month's meeting. We have some supplementals, extended days, and some kids' summer help.
Your motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. And discussion?
Any questions?
So overall tonight, we've had three resignations?
Three resignations this month.
So we're, where are we at as far as staffing and, and, you know, your plans for, tonight? We're-
Well, I didn't go, I didn't add the ones in for this month yet into my notes. So as I, I talked about it last month, we were at, based on staff that has left with staff that we have replaced certified or classified combined, we were at $360,158.44 is what we were up savings. That does not include the resignations I have in front of you.
So you gotta calculate-
So I gotta calculate those in. So next month, when I give you a board update, I'll give you another staffing update. Then I'll probably give my final staffing update as I normally do in August, because that kind of, after July 10th is pretty much the cut date for staff to kind of start, quit moving, you know? So it's really tough to gauge on that. So those three have not been added in there yet. There will be additional savings on top of that because we did lose a teacher in the middle school. For example, Ms. Robinson, a great teacher. We lost her to another school district. The new hire that you're going to approve tonight, I hope, is, is a new, just, just graduated, you know, young man. You know, the, the teacher that we're putting in first grade that we have resignation in one, but still is a step zero, you know? So we're hoping, you know, I mean, there will be, that number will, will be more. So, but yeah, I'll give you exact down to the, the figure again, but that's just where I'm at. But I could tell you, that's where I was at last month, if that helps.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Okay, executive session. We need a motion for the Marlinham Local School District Board of Education to recess into executive session pursuant to revise Code 121.22G1 to consider the employment or compensation of a public employee.
So.
Second. Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes. In at 8:08 PM.
[S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking. [S01]The leaves are falling. [S01]The birds are singing. [S01]The wind is blowing, and the trees are shaking.
Okay, we are out of executive session at 9:16 PM. Let me see, the announcements are, oh please visit our website. Dan's not here to give them so... There we go. The next Board of Education meeting...
You've got the Marlington Alumni Golf Scramble, June 19th.
June 19th.
Say it, say it again.
The Marlington Alumni Golf Scramble is scheduled for June 19th.
That's not true.
That's what it said.
No, but the alumni thing is always in July.
Is that the wrong date?
Yeah, let me look. It's July 19th, I know it is because it's a Friday and it's always in July. So that's July 19th, yeah.
Maybe check the website for confirmation, but it's probably July 19th.
That might be where they got it to put on the agenda.
That's not true.
They could be wrong in both places, then we have the real problem.
Thanks Karen.
Okay, the next Board of Education meeting is, is this right now?
Are you sure?
Got the right date?
July 18th.
Are you sure?
Is that right? Let's look.
Yes, it is correct.
Okay, July 18th, 6 PM, right here in the DLZ. Is there a motion, we don't even have it on yet, oh yeah, there's, motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
None.
Call the roll please.
Ms. Krebko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Here we are, we're adjourned, thank you.